Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for November 4th, 2014. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Carolyn Smart, present.
Colin McNabb, present.
We do have a flag here. Please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the individual liberty and justice for all.
Chairman's additions or deletions? I have none, Andy.
No, nothing else.
Board of Selectmen's announcements, updates, and reports. I just have one thing, Andy, I wondered if you'd comment on. We had gotten a note from Andrea about the warrant being posted and it didn't have the amounts in it. Are we planning on changing that, updating it?
We typically don't include the amounts in the warrant articles. The purpose of the warrant is to notify the public of what is going to be on the town meeting, the topic, subject matter that will be on the town meeting warrant. We typically leave the sums to be inserted, just in case something changes. You can always go lower if you post the amount, but you can't go, there's a sort of a debate whether you can go higher or you can only go insubstantially higher, whatever that might be. So for that reason, we leave it blank. We do know the numbers for some of the articles, so it would be up to the board. If you wanted to put them in, we can talk about that as we talk about the warrant tonight. But the standard practice, not just Townsend, but the standard practice is to leave the amounts vacant.
Okay. All right, well, we can talk about it then when we get to that.
Sure.
Does anybody have anything else?
Well, there was an announcement.
Okay. Townsend VFW Post 6538, it's ladies auxiliary. It's men's auxiliary. And American Legion Post 199, and its ladies auxiliary will honor all veterans who currently serve in the military and all veterans of earlier generations, including those who paid the ultimate sacrifice to maintain our country's freedom at Veterans Day, to be held at the VFW Park Monument in West Townsend on Tuesday, November 11th, beginning at 11:00 a.m. Oh, light refreshments will be served. And a flag retirement ceremony will be held outside the VFW Post home on Veterans Day at 2:00 p.m. Those who have never seen the proper way to respectfully dispose of tattered, torn, or faded flags should find this ceremony to be very meaningful. And I wanted to acknowledge and thank Deputy Fire Chief Dave Roy for his 27 years of service and to enjoy his retirement.
So I had a few things that I wanted to talk about. One of them was just an update on the building department's school building. I knew, Andy, we had talked about it back on August 12th and September 23rd, and I didn't know if we had come up with a resolution on that.
Yeah, Rich and I, Rich Hacks and I, met a couple of weeks ago and started talking about this process. We were scheduled to meet recently, but I was feeling a little bit under the weather. It wasn't really fully up to speed, so I asked to put that off. So we haven't rescheduled that yet, but we'll be meeting on that. I know that Rich has some ideas on that, so we certainly want to move forward on that, make sure we know what direction we're going in. But building permits are still several months away, so but we're working on that.
Okay. And the other thing that I wanted to talk about was the 119 sidewalks. I know at the last meeting, we learned that Chief Marshall had sent a letter and Mass Highway has come out to repave 119. And I appreciate that too, by the way, Chief, but I was concerned about the design for the sidewalks. I've been continuously talking about it for a while, and you had suggested that possibly Mass Highway might come out after the repaving's done to do the sidewalks. And I know you're going to contact him, but we received a letter, an email, and that you had voiced concern about pressuring Mass EOT about the sidewalk. And I wasn't sure why you felt it would be pressuring them to find out.
Well, I guess my concern was that I didn't want to look ungrateful to Mass Highway if we started pestering them about the sidewalk. I don't view the repaving project as getting in the way of the sidewalk project if we decide, in fact, to move forward with it. As we've discussed a few times, the $100,000 that was appropriated in 2005 for the sidewalk design is quite insufficient to design a sidewalk from the high school to the common. That was something that Greg Barnes brought to my attention during the transition, and you know, it's never been clear to me that it was a priority of the board or the town to pursue that further. The most recent conversations we've had had to do with a short segment of sidewalk in the harbor that would accommodate the bike trail. And so that's kind of what we're, what I focused on.
Well, like we've emailed back and forth to each other, which I'd be happy to read them into the record, is that, that's why I wanted to send out a bid, because I don't understand how you or possibly Greg have arrived at determination that the $100,000 wasn't enough to do the design.
Well, he mentioned it to me during the transition, as I said. I was involved in a number of sidewalk and roadway projects in other communities that I've worked in. We also have a letter in our records from Facebook and Thorn dyke from 2006, which established a cost estimate for design and bid specs of $200,000 to $250,000. So that's eight years ago. Presumably, that number is higher now. You don't have to go out to bid to get a price to do for budgeting purposes. I've asked Ed Kukula to, Dr. Weston Sampson, who does a lot of our engineering work, and get a budget number from them. So I expect that we'll have something, at least a working number, in the next couple of weeks. So then if we want to pursue a full sidewalk from the high school to the common, we'll have a valid number to work from.
And ask the taxpayers if that's something they're interested in. But do we know if Mass Highway is going to be willing to come back out to install them after they've repaved and reclaimed 119?
I don't, I don't, we haven't had that conversation with them. I don't view the paving project as killing the sidewalk project.
I appreciate.
I know that the sidewalk right in front of Town Hall was put in or rebuilt since the road was paved. You can walk along the edge and you can see that it was patched in. So I don't see that the highway project, the paving project would affect that.
Yeah, that's why I would like it clarified, and I thought that's.
Carolyn, can we perhaps take this as an actual, and put it on as an actual agenda item?
Do you want to do that with the?
Not today. And the reason that I'm saying not today is because it wasn't something we were planning on talking about. And I think it's important, instead of you and Andy going back and forth on it, that we as a board all discuss it together. Andy, if you can check with Ed for the next meeting to find out what the engineers say about the amount of money. But the other thing is, since I've been on the board, the only discussion that I've heard about sidewalk has been that section from the harbor to, like, past the church there.
Right.
As a piece of the rail trail. And the reason we weren't concerned about pushing that forward was because the rail trail wasn't ready to get going yet.
Right.
And I understand they're still, you know, they're just now ramping up the efforts to raise money for that.
Right.
Yeah, I would absolutely like that as an agenda item, because there's more to be discussed about that, too.
Okay.
So that's fine.
Is there anything else on that subject that?
We can just put it on the next meeting for full discussion.
No, I understand, but rather than going back and forth, is there anything else? I mean, I would like to know, is that $100,000 enough money for that small section of sidewalk, for the design work for that? Okay? Because if it's not enough for what it was originally intended for, then what we would have to figure out is, depending on how much that's going to cover, perhaps we need to just bring that back to town meeting.
Have a valid answer for folks.
Well, just bring it back to town meeting and ask them what they want and what they want to pay for.
Exactly.
Okay? But it was not, as Andy said, a priority because our assumption was that it was part of the?
I'd rather disagree with that. I've been bringing it up since I got elected. It's been discussed.
Carolyn, I didn't mean since you got elected. I meant it has not been a priority in the past, which would explain why Andy had not done anything on it. We had not given that to him as a project. So that's fine. We can put it on the agenda for next time. What else?
And I, after the last meeting, actually, you and I were there, Sue, we appointed our new town accountant. And I realized when we got home, we did not set her salary or give her a six-month probationary period. It was kind of a long meeting and we were having some discussions. So I had emailed Andy and, you know, I said, should we revoke that? And he, you know, discussed her salary, and he replied that he already negotiated a salary with Terry at a Step 8. Now, our comp and class plan, as you know, we've discussed many times, the program says you're supposed to start them on a Step 1 and at no time any higher than mid-range. I understand, I understand Andy's concern is that our town accountant didn't want to start for anything less than that. So I have two issues. One is the Selectmen are the only ones that can negotiate a salary, number one. But number two, if that's the case, and as allowed in the Mass General Law, we should be putting her under a personal contract and take her off the comp and class plan instead of creating inequity by starting people out as a Step 1. We recently just hired an administrative assistant for the police department. She is required to start as a Step 1. All the other employees are required to start as a Step 1. You start to start step people out at Step 8, no matter their experience, no matter their qualifications, you've created inequity in our system.
Okay, well, I disagree with that, okay? Because when we had, when we had HRS come in and when we had discussed it, I know you were at some of those meetings, but perhaps not at all of them. I remember one session in particular where Chief Klein was there, and one of the things that we did talk about was sometimes you have to bring somebody in at a higher step because of their qualifications. And they know, and we talked back and forth about it, and I said, you know, they're going to know that they're near the max for that position. But there was no one that said for higher qualifications, you still have to start at a Step 1.
Well, actually, the program says it. And what you do when you start people, you do have a range from Step 1 to Step 3. And now we have somebody who's very well qualified, they can go up to Step 3. That's a very common practice. But to start somebody out as a Step 8, that other employees with just as much experience and just as much qualifications, you've created inequity in our system, which is exactly what happened to the last comp and class plan. Now, Terry is very well qualified, but we've had a lot of qualified candidates. So how do you measure who's qualified enough to get to a Step 8, where you've had other employees that are here?
Excuse me, how many candidates did we have for this position, Andy?
Three.
Three.
And the qualifications of the other two compared to Ms. Walsh?
Uh, not any.
Then I would suggest to solve this issue so that you don't create inequity in your comp and class plan is you give her a personal contract as allowed by Mass General Law.
To tell you the truth, I don't have a problem starting her, putting her at a Step 8.
Well, I completely disagree, and I do have a problem with it.
Well, how about if we just have, we put a motion on the floor to do so. That's the recommendation from our town administrator, and we'll vote on it.
Okay.
So the recommendation of the town administrator was to start Ms. Walsh at a Step 8.
To move to, to start Ms. Walsh's starting salary for the town accountant as a Grade 8, Andy, a Step 8? Is it Grade 8 or 9?
It's a Grade 9, Step 8.
Okay. Grade 9, Step 8.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Colin, you haven't piped in with anything. Did you have any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New.
Did you have anything else?
No. Oh, I did have a question, Andy. I know last week when I was going through the bills, there was a repair for the ambulance, and you were going to look into that. Was that a accident?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to talk to the chief on that.
Okay.
He's taken some time off.
All right, so we can talk about that next time, right?
You're set?
That's it.
Thank you. Town Administrator Updates and Reports.
Just a couple of, a couple of quick ones. Just a reminder that the Devon's Household Hazardous Collection Center will be open tomorrow and Saturday, weather permitting. I think the weather is going to be decent both days, open from 9 to 12. And then next week, this is more of an internal comment. I mentioned it to Carolyn and Colin before the meeting, but we're closed next Tuesday for Veterans Day, so we'll have warrants available for the board members to come in and sign on Monday night. Nothing else tonight.
Thank you. We have approval of meeting minutes from October 21st.
So I would move that we approve the meeting minutes for October 21st, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Not all those in favor? 2.1 Executive Session to Conduct Contract Negotiations with Deputy Police Chief pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2.
So I would move that we enter into executive.
Yes.
Can I just intervene there quickly?
Oh, sure.
Would it be possible just to, because we have some folks here that jumped to 4.2, Melissa doesn't mind, but I would be happy to postpone the executive session just momentarily so the chief could deal with 4.2?
I have no concern.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, we're going to jump down to 4.2. Review Request of Police Chief Irving M. Marshall, Jr. to appoint Jeffrey J. Giles as a full-time police officer with a nine-month probationary period pending the completion of psychological testing.
Can I get a motion, please? So I would move that we appoint Jeffrey Giles as a full-time police officer with a nine-month probationary period pending the completion of psychological testing.
Second.
I'm sorry, Chief, do you want that to be effective from today to June 30th?
Today would be fine. Today would be fine.
Okay. For a term effective November 4th, 2014 to June 30th, 2015.
Second.
It moved in seconded. Questions, concerns?
Yeah, I'd just like to, Jeffrey's here, and along with his wife, Leslie, and I'd just like to introduce him to the board, those at home. I'm sure you can see from your packets that Jeffrey comes to us very well qualified, and I think it's going to be a good fit for us. So I'd like to congratulate him.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Pulse report?
Thank you.
Close against Leslie the other night.
Okay, we're going to go back to 2.1.
Hello, ready to enter executive?
2.1, can I have a motion?
I move that we enter into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with Deputy Chief, Deputy Police Chief pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Carolyn Smart, aye.
Colin McNabb, aye.
Sulecio, aye. We'll be returning as soon as our business is done. Would you, would it make sense for us to step out rather than ask everybody here?
Um, we can, we could step into the kitchen, I think that's open. More in the hall.
Okay, we're back. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2.2, Information Technology Upgrades. Discuss Options for Upgrading the Town's Information Technology Infrastructure. Melissa Herman is here to talk to us. Hi, Melissa. So what's happening?
Want me to start it?
Sure.
Okay, so we've had a number of conversations over the last several months about IT. Over the last year or so, we've had two outside firms come in and do assessments of our IT infrastructure. And they basically came back with a number of recommendations. And Steve Cloutier, who built the infrastructure that we've been using for 15 years or so, however long it's been, was involved at least in the first assessment. I forget if you were involved in the second one. And if I recall correctly, you weren't particularly surprised by some of the findings. But as we've, as the board and I have talked over the recent months, the speed with which technology is changing is to the point where we need to make some investment in our IT infrastructure. And we don't have a industry standard infrastructure, and so we've, and that was pointed out in the two assessments that were done. And so we've asked Melissa to look at that as our IT vendor. And so she put together the technology plan that's in your packets tonight, lays out a series of recommendations for bringing our IT infrastructure up to speed, really up to the next generation. And obviously, there's a cost associated with that. And the Finance Committee has also talked about this over the recent weeks, and the members are, most of the members are here tonight. So I think it's a good opportunity to talk about that. We do have a request on town meeting to appropriate some money for this purpose, so.
Total?
The total is like 30, there's two options, and we'll get to that as Melissa's talking. Roughly $33,000 versus roughly $38,600. So Melissa, if you'd like, would you walk us through the highs and lows?
Sure. I took the two assessments, and I took the top five priorities. And I just basically broke them down in this technology plan that you see, and estimated a cost for each one of these items. My original plan only included the first two priority items. I thought that was more realistic passing town floor. And the Selectmen came back and asked for more funding options. So this is what this plan is.
Actually, I think that was my suggestion. Because we had the available free cash to know what the total cost would be to completely upgrade, what is being searched for seemed to make sense. And go for one time, instead of this $10,000 increment, we seem to keep coming back for more. So if we had a complete plan, I mean, I did look it over. I don't know if.
Colin, you had a question?
No, I just, I'm almost just agreeing with what Carolyn was saying, is that I'd rather just grip the band off, the Band-Aid off quickly, so that, you know, because it's been an issue going on. It's been an issue as of late. And start everyone at the baseline and go forward.
I have one question, Andy. I believe you were going to check with Kim on, to make sure that this wouldn't qualify as a capital.
Yeah, and we had a conversation, actually had a couple of conversations about this. And she didn't believe that it qualified as a capital item, and I agree with her.
It's the five-year thing.
Yeah, the five-year thing comes into play. I think I've talked about it in the past. I know I've talked about it in the past. IT is one of those sort of nebulous areas where sometimes it's treated as a capital item, sometimes it's not, kind of like cruisers, police cruisers. They meet some of the thresholds and the criteria for capital appropriation, but they generally don't have the life expectancy. And so that's how we look at the IT piece of this as well. The computers, we don't crack the $10,000 threshold with the computers, but for the most part, three years is kind of a long range for a computer. Servers, the industry standard for servers is about three years. So, you know, we may stretch these out and get more than that, but really what we should be looking at is something like a three-year, three, four-year turnover on these.
Melissa, I do have a question.
Sure.
Were we to fill this plan and actually make it happen, will that put us in compliance in terms of making sure that folks all have secure sign-ins and that our data is all secure?
Whoops.
What we ran into a couple of years ago was trying to do a policy, an internet policy, for example. And what I found out and wasn't real pleased about were that there were actually people using, two people using the same sign-on. Now, I don't know if that was also having to do with the software at the time, but I just want to make sure that our plan includes any software updates that we need as well, because one of the things that I've been concerned with over the past two years has been, let's make sure that all of our IT infrastructure is complete and secure.
Yes, I don't have any user sharing accounts. I would not recommend.
Okay, but would this be all we need in order to make sure that that happens?
Well, that's, yeah, that's happening on the server side. But, I mean, in order for us to be compliant, we really have to step away from XP. We still have 12 machines that absolutely must be upgraded to Windows 7.
Okay. And one other thing that's come up recently has been, oh, if people ask for information, public records information, one of the things that we talked about was making sure that we have the ability to group things in folders, et cetera, and that everybody's trained on how to do that. We'll be able to do that as well.
Yes. You can do that now. That's one of the questions I had, though, with converting to Outlook or anything. What about the spam filter? I know, Steve, you actually wrote a software program for us for spam, right? How would that work with a new system?
If we went to a hosted exchange system that includes spam filtering, we had an in-house exchange server, we would have to pay for that expense.
What do you recommend, in-house or?
I would recommend hosted exchange, which is in the cloud.
Now, what's the ongoing cost to that?
There is. And you're going to pay for the amount of users that are currently using it.
In order to evaluate if we should go hosted out or in, I'd kind of like to know, what is our reoccurring cost each year going to be for that?
Well, I think, I think that one of the things that, because we talked about this before a little bit, and what I've run into myself at work has been, the more you have a proprietary system, the more difficult it is to have that system upgraded. you have a proprietary system, the more difficult it is to have that system upgraded. What you're paying for with hosting is the same thing that you pay for with, like, your virus software at home, and that is, you get continuous updates, and you're paying on a.
I'm not saying it's not worth it. I'm just, I'd just like to know what that reoc- reoccurring cost would be.
And I'm suggesting that, that, that I'd, I'd rather not, I'd rather go with.
So we'd rather not know what any reoccurring cost would be, or in addition to our budget, we should just go with it?
No, reoccurring would be fine to understand.
Okay.
But one of the other things, Carolyn, one of the other things that you asked was how much it would be to, to have just the internal one. And I'm saying, I wouldn't be interested in it. That Melissa's suggestion is not to have that.
Well, that's why I asked her what her suggestion was. I just asked what the reoccurring cost would be. Is there some pricing options available? Sign a two-year contract versus three versus one?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're appropriating the money, and we'd have the money in there for either one, whatever we decided to do. So it's not a decision that has to be made tonight, but I would like to look at the pros and cons of each.
Colin, you have a question?
I can make one.
One second, Steve. Colin had a.
And that, you'll probably have the information for town meeting.
Yes.
Yep.
Steve?
And I, you know, looked at this plan, the hosted, hosted exchange, the reason why I would personally recommend it, even though there's an ongoing recurring cost, is that's the only cost. Um, if you're gonna run Microsoft Exchange server, you're in the proprietary world. You have to buy stuff that works with Microsoft, and it's expensive. You have to buy a spam filter, and a pretty good one. You have to buy hardware that's fairly robust, 'cause Exchange server is a very inefficient program. And you have to learn how to, um, manage it and so on. We, um, where I work, I work at Bose Corporation, it's a big company. We use hosted exchange, and it's really good. It doesn't break down, it always works, and if there's a problem with it, they fix it. And that's, that's a real asset. Even though you're paying an ongoing cost, I personally think it would probably cost you about the same, maybe a little more if you did it internally, 'cause you've got other factors. Now, the only thing I wanna point out, is if you use hosted exchange, make sure, make sure, that we comply with the state and federal regulations for archiving, such as a municipal requirement, and the ability to get public information over the archival period, whatever that is, which I don't know the number. So those are, those are two things you need to make sure that we have. Otherwise, in my opinion, it's a good solution.
I, I would sug- I would probably echo what Steve said. I just know that the chief and I have worked on this with our, with Dave Maz at the last, we've, we've had a proprietary exchange system for only nine years, and, um, and, and the program's been very robust, and we've had very good luck with it. And, and it's been had minimal downtime and minimal issues with managing it. However, you know, um, time is money, and Melissa's time is money, so, but we looked at both, we looked at both hosting exchange and, and keeping our proprietary program. It's, it's one half dozen the other.
Yeah.
You know, with the exception of potentially time management, so, but I think Steve makes some very valid points. And the, and the position where the town hall's in right now, where you're starting from scratch, that might be the best option.
Well, the money would be available, like I said, within the plan, so we can certainly, you know, we'd take our MIS person's recommendation, just look at all the costs involved, for me and.
And for me. Um, we need, we need to put this on, the amount.
We don't need to put the amount on at this point.
Well, I'd like to at least let the finance committee know that we are looking at the whole pack.
Right, so the, so the, the question becomes then, um, if you go to page two, the executive summary page of the, of the document that Melissa prepared, the, the table at the bottom, priority five, replace mail server, or, um, and then, uh, exchange in-house versus hosted. So the, the hosted is, am I reading this, Melissa, that the hosted is, is forty-six eighty?
That's correct.
So it would be, so the total cost for all that she's laid out is just over thirty-three thousand dollars. It's just the smaller of the two.
Okay.
Yes.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, I wish she was glad that we're gonna.
So do you need a motion?
Um, I see Andrea has her hand up. At this, at this point, the, if the board would like to take a motion, um, it's really a, it's really support of the plan. It's not, at this point, it's not a, a motion in favor of a, a specific dollar amount. But if you're in favor of the plan, you wanna move forward with the plan, put it on for town meeting, I think that would be helpful so that we, so we're speaking from something, um, concrete.
Andrea, do you have a question?
On point five, which is the backups, it says that that new backup solution will be evaluated and implemented, but it doesn't explain how to do backup. Um, yes, it'd be a little, I think maybe a little more information.
Sure, it's, it's just, there's several different backup strategies we could have.
But it seems odd if it's not explained more, if you have a price for it, you know, I.
It, it's a price range, more or less. There's many different approaches you could take with a backup solution.
So Melissa, would you be saying that the different backup solutions that you would have to look at would be within that twenty-five hundred?
Yes, that is my budget.
That's your max?
Yes.
That you would be expecting? Does that sound reasonable, Andrea, to have it that way?
Well, it sounds, it sounds reasonable, but.
It doesn't mean she has to spend it all.
Specific costs or specific items.
Well, it's not like we've done a bid on this, right?
Right.
So.
But some of the things, the things that, that, some of the things came off the bid list. So you would have those prices pretty exactly.
You, oh, okay, the computers came off the state bid list, right?
Right.
Okay, yeah. Um, so the, um, so the backup is not a, is not a state bid list item?
Oh, no, I know.
So, so there's, there's multiple directions that we can go, that Melissa can go, in terms of addressing the backup. Um, and as we, as we implement, if I can interpret, um, the choice will be made as we go along to, to best suit what, what makes sense for, for our infrastructure.
Correct.
How long do you think it'll take you, Melissa, to implement all these changes and upgrade all of our, yeah, that's the timeframe?
That is a good question. The desktops alone are my number one goal, to have everyone migrated by the end of this year.
You're gonna be a busy girl.
To simultaneously, yes, do that as well as migrating a mail system, yeah.
So you wanna have the new mail server and everything in place all at the same time?
My contract's over as of July first, so.
So you, you expect to complete all these upgrades by no later than July one?
Would hope so.
I just didn't know if you were thinking of, you needed additional contract help or how that was gonna work, if that's something we need to discuss, because it's not gonna do us a lot of good to have the money appropriated for the, the items that you need without the time to update.
So, Melissa, why don't you just, uh, continue to work with Andy on this and, um, get it to a point where, you know, the kinds of questions that have been talked about tonight can be addressed and, um, and given to the folks that need to vote on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about the, about the implementation, whether, whether she would be potentially to bring somebody else on to assist. Um, and where this is a, a town meeting appropriation, um, the money would carry forward. It's not, it's not a, um, typical budget item where it would, um, where it would disappear on June thirtieth.
Well, you're not suggesting that there's money in there for contract help, are there?
No, there's nothing in here.
No, that's something that we might need to discuss. Now, your contract is.
Is that what you're suggesting, Carolyn?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out. And I'd have to look at your contract, if that's even a requirement of yours to have to do all these upgrades, 'cause then it could be simple amendment or, depending on the procurement rules.
I'm not gonna negotiate a contract on, uh, on Melissa's behalf, but I think.
No, I'm just asking what, what the requirements are in a contract, or expecting her to do all these upgrades.
Well.
I understand that.
Correct, that, that's part of the, that's part of the contract.
But is that part, that's what I'm asking.
But Carolyn?
Been part of all the IT contracts, yeah.
I think Melissa has to go and look at how much work she has to do. And if she feels like she can't do it, she needs to come back to us, and we need to negotiate that.
Oh, that's fine, as long as we talk about it before town meeting. So if the questions are asked, we know the answers.
I have a, um, so this looks pretty good. Also, the number one priority is to upgrade the computers to Windows Seven. It's not, it doesn't have to be done by the end of the, that's Melissa's personal choice. There's nothing wrong. Um, and going to Office 365, you know, that's hosted exchange, is not that, it's not that big a transition, because basically all the old email that we have is gonna be an archived database. We're gonna just keep that. We're gonna be starting over new. The biggest chunk, and one that really, you have to think about, is if we change the existing firewalls and routers and so on and so forth that are in place now, that actually work quite well, um, you'll actually have to do that townwide. There's a fairly sophisticated series of virtual private networks, and interconnect the library, and the water department, and the, all this is, is hooked in, because the software that we're using supports all that. It really does very well, in fact, in that area. Um, so just be careful that if we change things like that, we don't break the network, which I know Melissa won't. I just wanna say this sort of publicly that. That may be one piece that may not necessarily need to be upgraded. In fact, having worked with a lot of routers in my day, all of, most of them have underneath them a open source operating system. In fact, all the Bose software that we are writing, all these radios, we sell millions of them, all are written on open source software. We have Ubiquiti routers that I bought, you know, they're made by a third party. You tell them that into them, there's open source software, and that's what we're writing. The only difference is that we built ours as opposed to bought existing solution. Because of that, we have much greater flexibility and functionality, because the, um, third-party devices can't do what ours can do, because they just couldn't, they couldn't sell it. They, you know, they'd be ten thousand dollars a unit to get the same functionality we have today. So that's something you really have to think about.
All right, let's, um, I, I wanna move on. I, I think it, it, it sounds like the board is in support.
Yeah.
Are we not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, um, continue working with Andy, move forward, get some specifics. What, what I don't wanna expect, and, and it's prob- probably not a good idea, is, is for, um, the, the widgets and the whatevers to be discussed on town meeting floor. You know, I mean, what I, what I think needs to be discussed is, there is a comprehensive plan. It's been well-vetted, um, the, the costs have been vetted, and, um, and this is the plan we'd like to go forward with, and we asked the town for support for that, okay? Um, to have a debate on town meeting floor about, um, which widget works better than another is probably not productive. Okay? Okay, thank you, Melissa. Good job. Three point one, Kinder Morgan Northeast Direct Pipeline project update.
Um, just a couple of things. Not a lot to, um, not a whole lot to report since the, um, since the last meeting. Uh, there was a coalition meeting last, uh, last week, I believe it was, um, that I was unfortunately unable to attend. Uh, the next meeting will be on the seventeenth of this month at Dunstable Town Hall. It's a, that's a Monday, uh, ten AM meeting. Um, we've talked before about the open houses that are, that are coming up, that are being hosted by Kinder Morgan. Uh, the three closest to us will be on November thirteenth in Pepperell, which is a Thursday, I believe, November eighteenth in Hollis, uh, Hollis at the, uh, Hollis Perkline High School, and on November twentieth in Ashburnham at Oakmont Regional. Uh, this information is all on the, on the town website, uh, right on the main page. You can just scroll down about halfway down and get the, uh, get the information on the open houses. Also, on the fifteenth of this month is the statewide summit, which is being held over in Pittsburgh at Monty Tech, and that's, again, on the fifteenth from nine AM to one PM. And then, um, I would say the most significant item that, um, that has come up, it just, um, we just got it either yesterday or today, um, M A P, uh, MRPC took the, the Kinder Morgan maps that were submitted as part of their pre-filing application and overlaid them on all of the town assessors' maps for all of the communities that, all the communities in this area. Excuse me. Um, so those, those maps are, are, um, on the website, again, on the, on the main page, on the homepage. Um, they are, again, a superimposed map on the, uh, superposed pipeline on the map. So they are the best that we can come up with, but they are not Kinder Morgan's proposed route. Um, it is just the, the ro- the route as it, as it has been laid out so far, superposed on our, um, on our tax map. So they're a depiction only, but it does help to, um, to sort of clarify, give a little bit better clarity on, on where the pipeline is proposed to be. And again, I think the route that they've shown is a four-hundred-foot wide swath, so there's, there's gonna be a lot of play within the route that has, uh, has been laid out, assuming it continues to follow what, what they've laid out so far, so. Um, so it's helpful, but it's not the be-all and end-all. Um, I understand it's going to be the, the, the basis on which the statewide summit is going to be talking. I'm hopeful, although I haven't heard anything specifically or definitively from Kinder Morgan, but hopeful that they're gonna have something more definitive or more detailed at the open houses, uh, beginning next week.
And, um, just in general, for folks that, that haven't seen that, um, in general, where is the swath going if we were to look at, at towns and now?
Sure. Um, a little bit, a little bit hard to describe. A lot of it is overland. A lot of it follows the, uh, or, in parts, it follows the, um, the Unitil right-of-way that run through town, especially the western end of town. It comes into town south of Main Street from Ashby, um, sort of in the, in the vicinity of the Water Department on Main Street, but, but south of there. It then, um, seems to intersect with the, with the Unitil electric transmission line right-of-way and follow that sort of due south, and then, uh, basically takes a, a ninety-degree turn and heads pretty much due east over Bayberry Hill, crosses Clement Road, I think it's Clement, uh, Route thirteen, and then sort of sweeps in behind the end of Partridge, uh, Fizzenridge, I always say Partridge. Um, and then crosses the, which, which then is in state, that's state property back in there. Um, and, um, and then crosses the, the Squanacook, crosses Main Street in the vicinity of the Unitil substation next to, just east of Sterlite, and then crosses Main Street there and goes up over, um, over Meeting House Hill and eventually over, continuing east into Pepperell. Any, did I miss any?
No.
Any?
I think I've covered it.
Yeah, cuts across, uh, Meeting House Park as well.
Colin?
I haven't seen that super close. Does it really come near the Water Department, or does it come in west of that, in Willard Brook?
It's in west of there and then, and south of there.
Okay, so like Willard Brook State Park it comes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Colin? Leslie, I'm glad you're here, because I had a question for you.
Uh-oh.
'Cause I, this has been bothering me, and I didn't have a chance to, to, uh, look at the tape. When we had that, that town meeting, that, that, like, open meeting at the high school, and somebody asked the question, does the subst- does the depressurization station, or whatever it's, whatever it is?
Compressor?
The compressor station. Somebody asked the question, if you, do you recall about whether it vented gas or not?
They can.
They can, but, but remember, somebody asked that question, and they, I was almost positive, the representative said, no, they don't vent gas to depressurize.
We can check, 'cause we have that on, that should be on.
Okay, I just didn't have a, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to go and look at the tape.
No, I don't recall, but it certainly does. They can.
Right.
They can release the pressure and.
Well, 'cause I just wanna, I.
And they do.
I do remember something similar, a question along those lines.
I do, and they said, and I remember it said something about there's a technology they use, a mechanism in it to depressurize it without venting it.
Oh.
And I'm just curious about that, especially when it's odorized gas.
It isn't odorized.
It's not? I thought it had to be odorized to travel through Massachusetts.
No, it's odor- it's odor- not whatever, it's odor- No, it's odor, not whatever, it's odorized when it hits, like, goes into your house from the laterals, but it's, the stuff in that high-pressure pipeline is not odorized. So you don't smell it, you see.
Yeah, we'll check, I've heard both, I've heard both statements.
Well, that's great.
Did we ever?
Maybe we should start jotting down the kinds of questions that towns have.
Yeah, for open houses.
Do we ever understand the reasonings why you're using such old maps? I know we sent a letter kind of letting them know of our unhappiness.
Yeah, my understanding on that is that, is that FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which is the jurisdictional body, only requires USGS maps at this stage, at the pre-filing stage. The pre-filing stage is a, is a stage that they choose to go through, they don't have to go through it. There's no requirement that they do this pre-filing that they're, that they've done now. FERC says if you're going to do it, this is all we need to see for maps.
So it's a rough sketch, basically.
That's the reasoning why they use the older maps.
Correct.
Okay. When is the next meeting for the coalition?
It's on the 17th, and that will be in Dunstable.
Thank you. 3.2, Discuss Funding for Legal Services Associated with Northeast Energy Direct Gas Pipeline Project. We've been talking about this last couple of meetings. Where are we?
We talked about this at the last meeting, and, and a quest was made to carry this over. I think Carolyn was the opinion that we should include funding on the town meeting for, dedicated for assistance for the pipeline project, and I think the board decided to, to put it onto tonight's agenda so that all three members were available to talk about it.
How much money are we talking about?
We have, we have available free cash. My, my thought process was to appropriate some money and start researching to find a best law firm we can to represent us during the FERC application process. And our, I know our goal, and I think that was the Groton Selectmen's goal, is that we all unite regionally and have one law firm that specializes in this, represents us all.
How much did they?
This, this came up at the coalition meeting. The gentleman from Groton made that suggestion at, at the meeting that I was at. And then he sent a note out to all the cities, all of the towns in the coalition, and said, do you want to put some money aside? I, last, I thought Groton hadn't done it either.
Correct, they had a town meeting about a, I don't know, three weeks ago, I think, and, and so a couple of weeks before that, Selectman Schulman from Groton had, has raised this issue. Between when he raised it and when their town meeting came up, they decided not to put it on there. So they haven't appropriated anything.
Okay.
He put it out there really as a discussion item. It was something that they were talking about internally at that time, but at, at the moment, they have not done a standalone appropriation.
Yeah, and Colin, the reason I think we were waiting to have a full board here is I was leaning toward, I think it's too early to decide that. I, I appreciate the fact that we have free cash, and that's nice, but that doesn't mean that we have to put it aside.
How much money are we talking about?
But that's the point. No amount of money was decided, and Townsend, I think, would be the very first town to even think about it.
So this would be to?
It's, it's, we don't even know if we're going to need legal counsel for this specific thing.
Well, what we had discussed last time.
Carolyn, I'm sorry, I still have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't know if it's even going to be needed. We're only at the pre-filing stage. If it comes to, if it comes to the time that something happens and we absolutely need to have it, then there's other things we can do to make sure that we have money for counsel. But at this point, I am hesitant to say, let's put some money from free cash aside in case we need it. And, and that's just how I felt, Colin, so just to catch you up on it.
Just to, so this is, I'm sorry to interrupt Carolyn. So this is just to put, oh, an article on the town meeting.
We wouldn't even, that's what I was interrupting you for, I mean to. We didn't, we don't need to have an article put on. Andy had said that he had a catch-all article for budgetary, is that, is that correct? So what we do is bump up our legal services account in case we decided to join with other communities. Now, my point was, we have the free cash available, if it's appropriate and available to use, we don't have to worry about it. It goes back into the general fund anyway. So if it's not used, it just goes back into our free cash anyway. So that was my point, that if an opportunity comes up for us to find a really good law firm and us unite with the area communities to help look after our best interests, that money would be there, and we wouldn't have to worry about it. And if it's not used, it just goes back.
I don't know how you would come up with how much money we're talking about, because nobody else has done it so far.
Well, we hadn't even gotten to that stage. But I think if we bump it up even by $30,000, which is sitting there, that's, you know, maybe that's a discussion we could have with the FinCon.
I mean, you can make a motion if you like, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not in support of it at this time.
Well, I'm in support of it, but I'd be willing to wait. Do you have some feedback from the finance committee after they have a chance to meet about it?
I, I mean, I, I have no problem putting it before the town. It's a town meeting. I, my issue is I want, I want a more precise number.
Yeah, I agree.
Before we just, you know, just go, $30,000, $20,000, $10,000.
I agree, I agree 100%.
You know, I mean, and that's my only comment. I mean, if we have a more precise number, I think we should.
Andy says we have that article there as a catch-all, so it's not something.
Does anybody want to make a motion so we can move on?
I don't know what we'd be making a motion for.
I don't either.
Because the article already exists, but.
But my point is, we've all said how we think. I just, I want to keep the meeting going rather than to continue to discuss it over again, so.
Why don't we wait to hear from the FinCon?
Yeah, or maybe.
And see if they're, ask for their opinion.
Work with Leslie and see if, what, if the conservation thinks would be a good amount to set aside. You know, try and come up with something.
We just need to, I, I.
So we go to town meeting, say.
I want something concrete, not a shot in the dark.
But we're not in any type of time crunch as far as Warren articles, right, Andy? That last.
Correct.
Article, we'll cover it.
Yeah, so you've got, you've got till the night of town meeting to, to come up with a dollar amount.
And the one thing that you were concerned with, Sue, is that it doesn't get lumped into the legal services.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to categorize it underneath.
Yeah, definitely would do that. But I, I just don't want to be the only town doing it either. I, I mean, if other people aren't coughing it up or think that it's premature, then I'm certainly not going to be the first one to put my money in there, so.
Sue, I can, I can talk about it at the, or either one of us, whichever one of us goes to the next coalition meeting.
I'm hoping to go to the next one.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So there's really no motion, just?
No. Okay, we'll keep going. 3.3, Unitil Substation, update.
Yeah, we put this on after the conversation of, of the last meeting. The board asked me to reach out to, to John Denapoli at Unitil. There was, there was a question of whether there was a sound study done and, or sound readings taken. There were no readings taken, so we don't know what the decibel level is. So I, I reached out to, to Unitil, asked them to, to consider retaining a contract, a consultant to measure the noise generated by a mobile, one of these mobile generation units, generator units, and then devise a plan to, to mitigate the noise of, whatever the decibel level is. They've taken my request and they're considering it, but they've, they've, at this point, not said yes or no, so nothing really to report.
I, I had a.
Carolyn?
Yeah, I actually just did some research, and I'm by no means an expert in decimal readings or, or the, the sound structure around it, but it appears there's only two different kinds, a permanent and a temporary. So I was kind of under the impression by those emails that Unitil was searching for the decimal reading because they needed to know what strength sound barrier to use. But I haven't found where this different strength sound barriers is just either temporary or permanent. So why don't we just ask them, next time they plan on turning on the generator, to install a temporary sound barrier and then be done with it?
The thing is.
It's over with.
Can, can we just plain send them a letter, please, requesting that? That we expect that they will have acquired a sound barrier sufficient to muffle the sound produced by their generator equipment.
Second.
Aye.
And I would like, and, and for all of us to sign it. Because this has gone back and forth too much.
Yeah, let's just be.
I'm tired of talking to this. We need, they need to do something, they need to take care of this.
I mean, I want them, I want them to get a letter knowing that that is what our expectation is.
You know, I, I've.
Hire it to the next time they use it.
I, you know, I've, I went up to the, you know, and visited with some of the people in West Townsend, I talked, you know, this is when the generator was gone, but the light, the lighting issue is still gone, you know, and they're just, you know, the, the, one of the neighbors, the look of desperation on their face because they hadn't gone to sleep in weeks.
Is it anything like mine?
What's that?
Look of desperation. I want this settled.
Right.
I'm tired of talking about it.
Yes, we'll, we'll sign it in one.
Okay, so Andy, if, if, it sounds like it was moved and seconded, moved by me, seconded by Carol. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.4, Public Records Request of Karen Hill Review and Discuss Correspondence. Andy?
This was one that Carolyn asked to, to put on the agenda.
Yeah, so we received a response back from the Secretary of State's office, and I'm sure you've all received that letter. And basically what it's, you know, it's, it's a three-page letter, which anybody can read, but the reason I asked for it to be on the agenda.
Excuse me, is it in here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, folks, I've been away for the last several days, so.
And one of the things on the second page is basically what I was trying to say at the original meeting. It says, "Citizens should not be required to pay a premium for access to public records since the ability to inspect the records of the government is fundamental in our democracy. All records, including electronic records, should be sufficiently organized so that the search for the records is not an intensive, intensive task. It is a duty of the custodian to keep the records in an organized fashion." And that's basically what I had said back at that July meeting, you know, that we can't pass the cost off, not necessarily that it's in the law, we need to keep them segregated. So when Mr. Sheehan responded to the Secretary of State and said, you know, I think there was a little confusion about what my, what I was trying to say, and I just wanted to have that clarified. So in the letter that he had responded to the state with, he had stated that I, let's see. He said, "Selectman Smart stated that it was her understanding that public agencies are required to have IT systems in place that will automatically segregate exempt from non-exempt emails."
Yeah, I remember that.
And that's not what I said, so I just wanted to clarify that.
But that's what you said at the meeting, though.
That is not what I said at the meeting. I just read what I said at the meeting. So I, what I said is, my, I said, "Carol," and the reason I had asked is because we had been through this before, was actually my emails many years ago that were requested, and in the public law, I think it's Section 10, I apologize, I was really busy, I didn't get a chance to review the law, but I think it's 66, Section 10, we have responsibility to keep exempt from non-exempt records. There was a discussion a few years ago, well, actually many years ago, about trying to write a software program that would do that for us, but it was much too expensive, so the employees kind of have a responsibility to keep exempt emails from non-exempt. We're not allowed to pass that cost off to the person that was requesting it. And that's basically what the Secretary of State said. I didn't say that in the law, you, there was a requirement to keep them exempt at the IT level, so I wanted that, I wanted to clarify that.
Well, that's how I understood it, too.
Well, it's right on tape, my dear, so.
Well, just, just as a, as a clarification, when I exchanged some voicemails with Attorney Sullivan at the Secretary of State's office, and her response to me, which was left on my voicemail, was that there is no requirement in the public record statute that says you have to separate exempt from non-exempt at the IT level. She said, "If you, if you can do that, that's great, it would save you time. But if you don't do that, then you, you're allowed to charge for the segregation time." That's the, that's the, the reason that, for the, you know, for the substantial cost of the, of the, of the estimate that, that I provided to the Secretary of State's office, this is eight years' worth of emails. And, and there's, there's litigation, you know, certainly in the ZBA, in the, in the ZBA emails, there's probably litigation, well, there's litigation in the conservation because Mrs. Hill is in litigation with the town, so, you know, I, we're more than willing to provide the, the records. I just don't think that the taxpayers should support, support this, this, the request. If, if she wants the records, I think she should pay for the records, but we'll provide the records.
Well, Secretary of State.
Hold on, Carol.
Sorry.
What was the final, and, and so you explained back to the Secretary's office as to why we were using that cost?
Mm-hmm.
And the response?
Well, see, it got a little bit, it got a little bit muddled because we had the meeting on the 31st of July, and Carolyn raised the issue and said that we were supposed to have, we were supposed to have a, a software program that would, that would automatically segregate.
I never said that.
You, you did.
No, I didn't.
Maybe not that, in those words, but that's, that's what was said.
No, that's not what I said.
So that was the, that was what the board directed me to find out, was whether we were required to segregate the emails, and if we could charge for them. I left Attorney Sullivan a voicemail to that effect. She called me back, left me a voicemail, said what I, what I just, what I just stated. She also, in her email, said, "I'm also handling the Hill appeal. Maybe we're talking about the same thing. When we talk, we can, we can talk about both issues." I called her back several times, I was unable to get either voicemail or a live body at the Secretary of State's office. After a few tries, I said, "Well, I got the answer to the question. If, if they have questions about my, about the Hill case, then, then they'll reach out to me." So I was a little surprised when I got Supervisor Williams' response. But again, you know, I don't see why the taxpayers should be footing the bill for this, so.
So you, you responded to that letter as well?
I did, and I asked the, I asked Supervisor Williams to reconsider. I spoke with Attorney Sullivan directly a couple of weeks ago. It was mentioned in Secretary, in Supervisor Williams' letter saying that, that we could ask for reconsideration. And so I talked to Attorney Sullivan, asked for clarification on that. She explained the whole reconsideration process, suggested that that might be a good way to go. And so that's the nature of, of the letter, or the, the gist of the letter that I sent on October 22nd to Supervisor Sean Williams, asking for reconsideration, providing some additional information that, that we didn't have the opportunity to provide originally, explaining that there, you know, that, clarifying that it was eight years' worth of emails, that the, that there's confidential information in both of those inboxes, both in, in Leslie's and in Karen Chapman's. Litigation having to do with the ZBA, having to do with Conservation Commission, having to do with Mrs. Hill's current pending litigation against the town. So I haven't heard back from, from Supervisor Williams since then, and then shortly after that was the, the letter that Carolyn sent to him as well.
Okay, so we're basically waiting to hear back on, to get a response to.
Yes, waiting for a response from Supervisor Williams.
Okay, Carol?
Actually, what I said, Andy, at that meeting, and what you were supposed to ask was, I'm just going to read what I had said, and anybody's welcome to look at the July 31st YouTube tape to verify this. So I said, "I just thought $2,500 was really excessive, and I have a feeling that the Secretary of State's office," I don't know that for sure, "but from what we went through before, like I said, eight or nine years ago, they are not going to allow us to charge them for the time to decide whether a mail is exempt or non-exempt. But you can certainly check, Andy, I'm only going by memory." That's a lot different than what he had put in the letter to the Secretary of State's office. Now, with that said, what their directive was to us before Mr. Sheehan wrote this letter, the final outcome is basically a. the final outcome is basically, "Accordingly, I find that the feast estimate did not contain the detail that would indicate the reason for the amount of the time needed for search and segregation, and therefore the town has not met its burden under the law. The town is hereby ordered to revise the amount of hours for search and segregation, provide Ms. Hill with a revised estimate within 10 days from this determination. Once Ms. Hill pays the revised estimate, she must be provided with the records within 10 days." So he did not, he told me he was revising the estimate. He's instead decided to go for reconsideration. That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with what he said that I said in his letter for redetermination. And I wanted that clarified.
Okay, that's fine. It's been clarified. What, um, you'll let us know when you hear back? At this point, what's happening?
Nothing.
Okay.
We're, we're not, we're not spending time on this. We did, I did say in my, in my response to Supervisor Williams that we would move expeditiously on the, on the response, and that, um, if it was his preference, that we would hold the check from Mrs. Hill, not, not deposit it, not cash it. And then if it turns out that we spend less time than we expect, then we would offer her the opportunity to submit a new check and we'd give her the old check back. But we're, we're saving time.
Steve, you had a question?
I have a comment. If the requester, I don't know anything about this, gives us a more specific or narrow definition of what he or she is looking for, this might make it a whole lot easier because the mail system will allow you to look for words and filters, and you can generate a list and just get that.
That is, that was not the request.
I know, but if they modified it, it might actually solve the problem.
You know what? I, I don't even want to get into a discussion because this person is also in litigation with, with several bodies of the town. So it's not something that, um.
Otherwise, you may.
Is it litigation or appealing decisions?
I believe it's litigation.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, when I think of litigation, I think somebody's suing us, but they're appealing their rights under the conservation decision and zoning board decisions, right? There's been no suit files.
Well, one is through the DEP, is an administrative appeal. The other is an appeal through the court, so essentially it's litigation.
Yeah, technically it is litigation, but I just wanted to be clear.
So, um, I'd rather not touch that, so.
3.5.
Okay, lost it. It's gone.
Um, you do this every year. I can just, you want to share?
The Lions Club.
It's just the Lions Club Christmas tree.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I would move that we approve the request of 3, is it Farisi?
Faris.
Faris. Um, of the Lions Club to sell Christmas trees on our town common from November 29th, 2014 to December 24th, 2014. Do we usually include sale hours or just leave it?
Uh, no, we've typically not included sale hours.
Okay, that's fine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.6 Review and Accept Sustainable Materials Recovery Program and Municipal Grant from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $750. Andy?
Uh, pretty straightforward. Items 3, 6, and 3, 7. The DEP issues, or distributes grant money under the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. We received $750 under the, under the SMRP grant. And under 3.6, and under 3.7, we received $2,400 under the Recycling Dividend Funds Program. So these are just acceptance of grant funds.
Okay. Can I get a motion? 3.6?
I would move that we accept the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Municipal Grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $750 for a targeted small-scale initiative.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would move that we accept the Recycling Dividend Funds under the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $2,400.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.8 Review and Sign Resolution Declaring November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month.
Sue, I'm going to read this for Carolyn. Resolution. Whereas in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 39,590 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States and is projected to come, become the second in 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6%. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it's generally late-stage, and 73% of pancreatic, pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 920 deaths in, will occur in Massachusetts in 2014. Whereas the, that's a big word. Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2013, which calls for, on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide strategic direction and guidance need to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas it will be very difficult to leverage the opportunities that, out of the scientific framework developed by the result of the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act, unless sustained and adequate funding is provided to the National Institutes of Health and National Cancer Institute. And whereas federal funding for medical research is critical to job protection and creation in Massachusetts, and whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Townsend nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Townsend support these patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas the good health and well-being of residents of Townsend are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes and effective treatment. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen designate the month of November 2014 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the town of Townsend, Massachusetts. Given this fourth day of November 2014. Signed, Sue Lisio, Colin McNapp, and Carolyn Smart.
Thank you. Thank you, Colin.
Sue, can I make a suggestion?
Sure can.
That we take items 3, 12, and 3, 13 out of order. Uh, that would allow the chief and deputy, as well as Leslie and Ed Gagnon, to not have to, as, as much as I know they want to sit around through the discussion of the sick policy and the town meeting warrant, allow them to move over, move, move home.
I didn't say yes yet. Maybe we like the company. All right, 3.12. Review and Sign Police Mutual Aid Agreement Between the Town of Townsend and the Town of Brookline, New Hampshire.
So we've done a number of these, and the chief may have, uh, some comments on this as well. We've done a number of these in Massachusetts. This one's a little bit different in that it is with, uh, with our neighbors to the north, Brookline. But it has been reviewed by council. They have a similar statute to, New Hampshire has a similar statute to the Massachusetts statute. And, um, so we've, with the assistance of council, we've blended that to make sure that it, that it jives in both, both states.
As long as council's reviewed it.
Chief, I don't know if you had any, anything else to?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, we've been, we've been requested up to Brookline a number of times, in fact. It's been concerning me because we're crossing over jurisdictional, not only jurisdictional town lines, but state lines. Chief Quigley up at Brookline contacted me a few weeks ago when they were talking about a crisis plan for the school up there on, uh, I forget the name of it. It's an academy, uh.
William Douglas Academy.
Yeah, up on our north end, right on the line there.
Yeah, right on the run.
And they were talking about an evacuation plan, if they had to evacuate the school, and they got permission from the next-door neighbor there to use his field, which is actually in Townsend. And he asked for our assistance if they had a crisis up there at the school, for us to go up there. And I, and I talked to him about, uh, the issue that I've been concerned about is jurisdictional issues and so on and so forth. So with that being said, he researched it up there, got ahold of their RSAs. We had our attorney research it down here and covered under, um, uh, 40G. So that was kind of like combined together. Our attorney added some language in there that is specific to us and, and liability type of things. So, um, so I'd feel better if we had a mutual aid agreement. We used to swear in Brookline officers, we used to swear in Mason officers, and so on and so forth. But there's been issues in the past up there, and, and I'm trying to avoid any liability issues and have more clarified, uh, type of structure here. So I'd ask that the board consider signing this mutual aid agreement with Brookline.
Question?
You said, you said legal counsel says it's fine?
Yes.
I have no issues.
Okay. Up a motion?
I would move that we sign the police mutual aid agreement between the Town of Townsend and the Town of Brookline, New Hampshire.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.13. You're welcome. Thank you for watching out for us.
Well, that's okay. Is there two copies there? Yes.
Yeah, um, because we're going to have the board sign it as well, and just.
All right. I'll have them sign another one next week.
All right.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to bring a second one of the.
I would amend the motion to sign it out, the second copy outside of the meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
We can do that.
So they have an original.
Aye.
Seconded.
Aye, aye.
Thank you very much. Not that I don't want to say.
Are you sure?
Okay, where are we? 3.13 Review and Sign Consensual Order of Taking for the Conveyance of the Clement Property, so-called, located off South Row Road and Emery Road to the Commonwealth of Mass.
So you'll recall back in May at the town meeting, the town voted to convey a piece of tax-titled land from, uh, from the town to the division of fish, Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. Over the intervening couple of months, few months, the, um, the parties have been working to that effect. And, um, the Commonwealth is going to take the property by eminent domain. It is a, it's a normal process for public agencies to acquire land by eminent domain, even when it's a negotiated and friendly transaction. The benefit to the acquiring agency is that it clears any potential title defects that, that there may be. So, um, so what the, the state has prepared for the board's signature is a, um, is a, an option and a consensual order for the, um, for the board to sign. There's, uh, two originals, and there are two locations on each of the originals for the board to sign. The order itself and then the addendum. So this will just, um, further push the project along. The closing will take place, and before the end of the month, we hope?
Correct. Uh, there are a few other, um, pieces of paper that needed to be signed. So there's an acceptance of full settlement and, um, disclosure of beneficial interests, which, you know, it's just a form that we keep in, in our file. It doesn't get recorded. So I take it you have all that stuff there?
Well, I don't have the disclosure because I was, uh, under the impression from council that we didn't need anything other than, than the attachment, or the addendum, rather, and the, and the, um, and the order, or the option, rather. If, if there's, if there's more, we can, we can certainly do that next week, but, um, we can sign that out of session.
Yeah, so, um, I sent all that information to town council, and she sent an email back saying that she, the only document that she had any comments on was the option. And so we made the corrections that she requested, and so that one's certainly, um, fine to sign for tonight. If you could sign that one, that would be great because, um, I need to scan it and send it to my attorney in Boston in order for him to request the check to be cut.
So we're only missing the, um, disclosure of financial interest?
I think it's just the benefit, disclosure of beneficial interest. Is that the only other?
Uh, there's.
We've got the option and the addendum that goes with it.
And then there's also the, um, acceptance of full settlement. So, um, when the town administrator referenced the taking by eminent domain, it's act, the, the term is actually a consensual order of taking. And so what happens is, um, because it was agreed upon, you know, town needing to agree to the price, to the purchase price, um, what happens is the commissioner of the Department of Fish and Games signs the consensual order of taking. It gets recorded, but, um, the selectman, the grantor, sign an acceptance of full settlement. So that does not get recorded, but we keep it on file to, to prove in the future that we didn't actually take it by eminent domain. It was consensual.
Okay, so, so you've got two out of the?
Two out of the four.
Out of the four. Okay, so if we have a motion, could we?
If you, if you move to sign all four.
All four.
Then you can sign the other two out of, out of session.
Or if I might just add, um, to sign any, and if the, if the motion could say to sign any and all documents as required, that, um, pending town council's approval, that would, you know, in case we miscounted one or something.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Sound okay, Carol?
You don't hate doing that without reading things, but since this is a done deal, I mean, I'm not going, you know, I understand, and council's going to review it, so.
The reason for the, in case you're wondering, what's the sudden rush? We had to wait until September to close because, um, when it was taken the second time correctly by the, by the town, there's a one-year redemption period, and so we wanted to wait until that, that clock ticked out. So that has occurred. And then, um, there's a new governor that will be elected shortly, and you never know what happens when there's a change in administration.
Yes, oh, that's true.
So I would move that we approve and sign all document, all documents necessary for the conveyance of the Clement Property, so-called, located off South Row Road and Emery Road to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and to sign such documents outside of a meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, yes.
We'll find out soon enough if we, what that change will be.
As soon as we, um.
Well, town council will look at all of it.
As soon as we can, we will get this documentation to the Department of Capital and Asset Management, and hopefully we can, um, close by the end of.
Yeah, disclosure is just a standard, that goes on file.
Hopefully we can be closed by the end of November.
Thank you.
So can we get a copy of this? Are you taking it, or are you just going to get it in the morning? Leslie, you're going to take it? Is there a way for us?
Yeah, we did two originals of this.
Okay.
My gosh, you're so pushy, Leslie.
It's been a pleasure dealing with town council. She was really, um, did a quick review. And it was great to deal with Andy as well.
Leslie deserves a lot of credit on this one, so.
Yeah, she did a lot of research on the title.
It's done. It's done. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Fish and Wildlife.
Thank you.
For being protected forever.
When, when, how much?
Open to the public.
How much property is that?
Oh, boy. Is it like 35 acres?
I think there's a description in here.
I thought it was 32.
35, 32?
32, I think.
32 acres.
Open to the public.
44,000 acres.
Access, access is off South Row Road at the intersection of Old Meeting House Road and South Row Road, South Harbor Road.
What's the, is the elevation below, is it, is it?
It's varying elevation, varying topography. Yeah.
Very low, right in the street front.
Yeah.
No, because I know they've got that big sand wall that, at the Rockland Club.
Oh, it's probably below that, but then as it goes.
I just wanted to make sure. I ignore it. I know it's going to be marked. They mark on the trees where the line is, but I still just, it makes me just slightly nervous.
Nervous.
If it's like.
Yeah, that, that wall's meant near the property, I don't think.
No, it's further in their property. They should, none of the bullet should be leaving the body going to the club.
Andy, do you want us to fill in the date here?
No, I'm worried about people coming too.
Um, yes, please.
Today is the fourth, right?
That's what I'm concerned about.
We should probably mark, mark the boundaries as soon as possible. We could do that, mark the boundaries.
Or you can say it's not advised to come past this point or something, you know.
I think Don Masuka signs up something that there's a firing range or someone warning people.
Well, I know on the, at the border of the property, I think there's a marker. I'm pretty sure.
Something's there.
There's something there because it came up at town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that they, they were, they mark there.
Their, that area.
Their area.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks for taking us out of order too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Okay, back to 3.9. I knew it this time, Colm. Special town meeting review and discuss article set date, sign warrant. What we need to do, Andy, because we kind of got bumped.
Right, you can, you can.
We need to officially vote on the date for the town meeting, right?
Correct. So, right, so the date is, is now, except, the date of December 3rd is acceptable to all of the critical players, town clerk, town council and deputy moderator. So we've, we've sort of penciled that in for everybody, let everybody know that that's the tentative date. All that really needs to happen now is to sign the warrant so that we can post it. The warrant hasn't changed from what we talked about at the, I don't think it's changed. We, well, the only change was in Article 5, which I think happened after the last meeting. We changed that. That had been the Consulon Aging Budget Amendment, but we didn't need that, so we made that the, an article to pay down a portion of debt. Everything else remains the same as what you saw a few weeks ago. So if the Board is willing to, to sign the warrant tonight, we can get that posted and then at the next meeting, we can talk about the numbers and, and all of that.
Okay. Are there any items here that you would feel comfortable filling in amounts for?
Um.
Anything that isn't potentially or possibly going to change?
Sue?
Yeah.
Andy, there are a couple of, we're still waiting for a couple of numbers, right?
We're waiting for a couple, yeah.
Because I just, I, this is me personally. I'd rather do all of, all of them in one shot.
All the same.
Well, it was more, Andre had sent a note earlier.
Yeah, I got the email.
And it is nice if we can post it with actual numbers, but if they're not solid, you know, it's that you're posting the meeting and these are the things you're going to talk about.
Right. And then, you know.
It's not unlike what we've done before.
When we, when we do the operating budget, you know, we have to, you know, appropriate a certain sum for the operation of the town for the current, for the coming fiscal year.
Yeah.
So we have a big $20 million, you know, uncertainty right there that.
But we have been letting the FinCon know as we've gone over it.
He's been very good about letting us know.
Okay.
Well, I just think things, to your point, just, I mean, it's not necessary that it be done this evening, but things, we know we're putting $20,000 into stabilization, right? We know we're putting.
Right, but my point is, I want to talk about them all.
You want to do it as, oh, you still want to talk about?
I want to talk about it, but I want to do it all at once so that we can, you know, so maybe we can have a discussion with the FinCon at the same time. You know what I mean?
And we can always put the information out there before town meeting, once we're settled.
And I'd like to shoot for that if we can.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Okay? Because that way people have a chance to review it. And I think that was Andre's point.
Okay.
I mean, we know the FinCon's reviewing it, but it's nice for other people to have a view to the money they're going to be talking about too.
And that way they don't have to go to two different meetings to, you know what I mean? They'll, you know, review two, two videos to find out, we don't say we're talking about financial articles on such and such a date.
Okay, so are we okay then with the vetted date of December 3rd?
Aye.
Could I get a motion?
I would move to set the special town meeting date to December 3rd, 2014 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's going to be at Town Hall as usual, right?
Town Hall, Town Hall 272 Main Street, Townsend.
And do you want to, do you want to sign the warrant tonight? That way we can, we can get it posted and get it out there so people can see it. Or do you want to leave it? We have, let's see. We meet the 18th. If we wait to post it, if we wait to vote it on the 18th, it's cutting it a little close. Gives us only one, one day. We have to get it done the next day. So it would be, it would be.
Who do you think?
When is the Fin, Finance Committee meeting next? Do you, do you know when's the Finance Committee meeting next? Next Tuesday?
We can get on the 20th, but that doesn't mean that. We can arrange to meet anytime. We had a big open schedule. We just assumed by then everything would be done.
I was just thinking we could vote to sign it outside of a meeting and then if they had any questions Tuesday, they'd have time to address it before we signed it. But either way is fine with me.
I'm okay with signing.
I'm okay with signing it as well.
So I would move that we sign the special town meeting warrant for December 3rd, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jump right on that call.
I don't feel.
I know.
I know.
I'm frozen.
Is there?
The AC, so people know the AC is stuck on in this room, so we're all freezing to death.
Do you want to?
Can we push that to the?
I was just going to suggest that. Can we push 310?
Because I did have something, an update that I want to talk about, but it could take a few minutes.
Okay. 310 to next meeting, please.
I would move table the sick leave donation policy.
Thank you. And aye. And second.
In no particular order.
Wait, stop, reverse.
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
Okay. Okay, 311. Vote to close to the public, the Town Hall and non-continuous operations offices on November 28th. Allow employees to use vacation or personal time.
I would move that we vote to, I would move that we close to the public only, the Town Hall and non-continuous operations offices on November 28th, 2014. Allow the employees to either use vacation or personal time.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 41. Gallery Committee. Review the request of the Gallery Committee to appoint Lisa Lewand to the Gallery Committee for a term from October 22nd, 2014 to June 30th, 2016.
I would move that we approve the request to appoint Lisa, is it Lewand?
I don't know.
To the Gallery Committee for a term effective October 22nd, 2014 to June 30th, 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 43. Review recommendation of Town Administrator Andrew Sheehan to appoint an executive assistant to the Town Administrator. Andy?
So over the last several weeks, we've been accepting resumes for the executive assistant position in my office to replace Karen Canfield. We've received about, almost 20 applications from people interested in the position. We interviewed, we narrowed it to four. We interviewed three. One of the, one of the four that we had planned to interview in the interviewing time had accepted a position elsewhere. So interviewed three people and I'm recommending the Board appoint Jody DeShane as the executive assistant to the Town Administrator. There is a memo in front of you to this effect. Jody comes to us with a lot of HR experience as well as a lot of office management experience and really think that, that she'll be an asset to, to the office.
So it would move that we approve the hiring request to, to appoint Jody, is it DeShane's?
DeShane.
Just say it's the executive assistant to the Town Administrator.
Hello?
Effective October 20, I'm sorry, effective November 4th, 2014 with a six-month probationary period with salary to be set at grade four, step one.
You might want to repeat that because the guy that's taking notes just went out to make sure that we don't get lost.
Well, he's got it right here.
He's got it right here.
Okay, you're going to do the whole thing?
Yeah.
He did warn us. He warned me before the meeting that at 9 o'clock, the building is automated.
Yeah, we don't have much time.
So we don't have much time.
The lanes are going to get shut.
Then you can't talk.
We should do that in selectmen's chambers.
Then you can't talk.
No, I need to talk. I enjoy speaking. I seconded the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
May I have an additional update?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Make it quick.
I got a email. There's some confusion about the use of the TESA fields. I had Andy look up the, the lease agreement with TESA. They do not have exclusive rights to those fields. Townspeople can go and use them when TESA is not. They just have primary rights. But they, they put a gate up without telling anyone. There's now a gate blocking the driveway. So then people who want to utilize the field can't.
Will we schedule a meeting with some of the folks and just see what's going on?
Because I know, yeah, I just think it's, because I got, you know what, and there was somebody, the person who sent me the email said that they were using the fields and TESA was not, you know, using it at all. And a representative from TESA came down and told them they couldn't use the field.
Well, I remember reading something about some four-wheel dri, uh, some vehicles doing.
I'm sure that has something to do with it.
But hold on, because there's a couple of things that go on with that. You know, we have some limitations on where vehicles are allowed to go regardless of who owns those vehicles. And, and I want to make, make sure that whomever is using it is aware of what those limitations are and that those barriers are still there. But maybe, you know, maybe we need to talk with the group to make sure that, because, you know, as, as people turn over, sometimes they're not.
Right.
They think that they own the property and, and rights to it and all that.
And I just want, you know, it's, it's a nice field and it's nice that, you know, when TESA's not using it, if somebody wants to go down and play soccer or something like that.
So the question, I guess, you know, that needs to be discussed too is, you know, who does maintenance on that field too?
Right, and they, they handle the maintenance.
I understand that. So that might be why they're concerned about others using it because they're the ones doing maintenance.
Right, but if the lease agreement says that people of Townsend's have the right, that residents have the right to use it.
Yes, I understand, but their concern may be that they're doing the maintenance.
And I'm sure that's what it is. And I'm sure they didn't even think about that.
So what is your suggestion? That we have them come in?
Well, I heard somebody say that and I think that makes sense. They're also, their lease runs through 2016. I forget if it runs through the fiscal year or the calendar year, but they have already requested a, an extension of that lease, lease another five years.
Okay, so it's a good time to talk about it then.
So I think it's an opportunity to talk about that.
Okay. So why don't you invite them to one of our next meetings?
So I would move that we approve and sign the payroll and bill of payable warrant out of session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn at 9:04.
Second.
Sorry, I had to run. Was the motion on the, on the executive assistant, was that?
It was, it was unanimous and it was according to this. And I think Carolyn also put in the.
It was according to your memo, the grade four, step one, the same salary that you had put in there.
See, he didn't have that in here. That's why I.
So we're adjourned?
Grade four, step one.
That's what that is.
I know. That's what you're saying.
I didn't want to say her, although we just.
No.
We're adjourned.
Yes, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, it's official.